...to order, thanks to everyone for coming out and seeing. I know the road's a little bit slick out there, so it's good to see so many people. Considering Kevin Gale will be here momentarily, I guess the roads are pretty bad this afternoon. First on our agenda is to approve the minutes from November 15th. I think we'll do so. So, any discussion, any changes, questions? Paul was up here. You can go. Did you get your airbag? This is the wrong, this is the wrong answer. That raises two citizen houses. Here is that who will probably just wait until next season. He is, he's kind of under two seconds.
I guess in the interim, pretty much speed, there have been a few people who were asking us to combine the annual school report with the annual town report, which would be an ideal thing to do. Again, the dates don't match up for that, so it won't be too much. The town doesn't have to have its town report already until March 6th. We have to have our school report, everybody has to wear their team, so it'd be kind of hard to write it all for those cases. We either have to move our meeting for town, I have this report ready if we need it, so the ask base is wide, we'll be very, very. If we get an ideal thinking, it's close enough, it's going to be difficult from year to year to separate those two things out. In years past, we probably didn't pay as much attention to the apple, they actually had published it. But we are very intentional, we're very, very, very serious. We will keep our meeting at the same and.
Evening, Kevin.
Good evening.
I was really here, she's next door.
I like the talks.
Jerry, we're calling it at work.
Working away here in the snow.
Definitely.
When I talk to the staff.
We just got through the citizen house. Our presentation was cool.
Could I request that the sixth grade presentation be moved up towards the beginning of the meeting so that we can use that in the.
Only if the parents come and leave the meeting.
I would love to play the.
Is there an agenda for us to look at?
I have them right here, and I have copies of them. Again, I follow this.
I wanted to wait again, I didn't know you were going to ask where I could probably have the road.
No, Margaret's off, where is she?
I don't bother with the Jackson six grade. Time before.
Hello, Applewood students, and we are here to tell you any recent updates about the Jackson Fair School Pavilion. And we recently received the plans for the pavilion from our architect Chris Doctor from Olson and Lewis architecture. And Nancy Finn will talk to us about the location of the pavilion.
All right, so, right here is where the school is, and then right here is for the Whitney Center, the actual school pavilion. My oldest and oldest, Olson and Lewis architecture. So here's the back parking lot of the Whitney Center, and here's where the pavilion is going to be. It's curvaceous wide and plenty. Yeah, well, and then over here is the playground, so it'll be behind the school, it'll be behind the Whitney Center. And then here is the ground. This is like where all of the, like one who repeats, like where one particular thing on the way is, repeating over here. This room shows a horizontal cut of the pavilion. The dolce squares are the beams that we support the pavilion to. And anything that's in a line of line or gathering lines is above or below the cut. So here you can see the beams that we support the roof. And these outlines are the footing and the foundation that will underneath the beams to support it all. All right, so this is the roof plan, and it's a vertical view of the roof. And in the middle here is the ridge crossing covered by the metal seams making the piece of the roof. And then this one here leads to another gate, which is this one. And we can see the screws are connecting the seam, the metal seam to the roof into the wood sheeting. And right here is the post and the beams where the roof will be on top of. And then here again is another view from the end. Here's the ridge crossing again, and the beam, and once again, all the screws connecting to the wood sheeting.
So this is the timber frame on long elevation side view diagram. This is the ridge, the king post bent, the post, the rafter, hardwood spine, the core, the brace, the stone veneer foundation, and the T-Rex connector. This is our footing, and it is four feet deep is the minimum. And the reason why we have four feet is because we try to pass the box line. And this number, or this code, locates the most up picture of the footing. This is a film that we use to help support the footing. These are holes that also help support the footing, and this is the ground.
Josh, can you just make sure that when you're looking at the pictures that it's turned so as the audience can see, it's kind of different? Yeah?
Here is where all the hardwood beams and the rafters all connect, and how the braces are put on. And then here is the 3D image. This is the top of the roof, so you can see all the beams, and you can't see the footage. Here, this front, you can see the roof is on, and you can see the footage that are under the ground, so. Here you can see the king post and the queen post, which will go on either end of the pavilion. There's a wall in the front of the king post, and the queen post will go on the back. The reason we don't have two king posts on either end is because if we ever add a sugar box to the pavilion, we won't have to worry about the large beam on the king post for adding a chip. The difference between the king post and the queen post is the large beam and the connection, connection supports on the king post, and these are two smaller supports on the king post. And these markers take each other's place. So this is the joint, we have the top of the king post, and this is a 3D view of the top of the king post. And this is the king post that is the bottom and the top of the small boards.
These are the engineering notes, and our engineer was John McDouble from HEB Engineers. He was in charge of checking our building design and making sure it was made sturdy enough and it was stable.
Okay, now we're going to talk about fundraising. And recently, we've had the craft fair, and we've raised about $296 for the pavilion. And we have contacted Flatbread Pizza Company about possible fundraising there. And that's all. And the next steps we have are, we're planning to contact the Kiwanis Club for a publicity trip, and we are still researching foundation donations, and we're hoping to have the pavilion built by the end of this year.
They learned a lot about the vocabulary, as you can see, and the whole process. Chris Doctor did a fine job, so we were really lucky to have him help us out with that.
Thank you, guys. For the chance.
Any questions or comments, maybe from the audience?
How much more is needed to go there?
How much should I?
How much more is needed to go there?
Do you mean in terms of dollars or in terms of work? We're hoping to have everything donated.
Dollars. Like, how much do you need more to build it? How much we need to raise to build it?
We're hoping everything, buddy, will just donate. We don't have like a round number. We're hoping the foundation people will donate the foundation. We already have the wood, it's sitting out back here, it's ready to go. We're going to need lots of parent backs to volunteer when we do the raising.
So we're going to do like a fundraiser?
Yes.
When you said you wanted it done by the end of the year, asking the end of May 2017, do you mean the end of the school year or the end of 2018? What's that?
The end of the school.
So do we have a goal for fundraising? Even though most of the things will be donated in time? Is there an amount of your goals? I don't have that sheet. Do you remember, John? We had a breakdown at one point.
Yeah, it's on. We're looking for material donations from Hancock Lumber. We're writing out letters for them. We're also having, we've already touched base with a few local contractors with digging up the site during April vacation, actually around that time, and after the road bands go off and after the ground thaws out. I'm going to be cutting the thing during April vacation and then throughout April so that we can do workshops for the kids and the community members, so. But we've already had three different local contractors come forward to help us with the timber frame joinery. So I'm going to be doing that with my cousin and Maya Beach, and also somebody with, I don't know if I can say his name right now, Wilder's dad, Brian Murphy. Yep, so he can be working with us as well. And I don't want to say people's names that have already kind of tentatively said that they want to do things, but I don't want to put them in a position where they can't follow through with that. We have some really good leads with concrete and excavation, so.
Yes, so we asked a barn region. Now, barn, the timber frames themselves, are they constructed in place or are they constructed on the ground, and then what happens?
Well, we're working on this right after the new year. We're going to be starting doing all of the scale drawings, building models, looking at how joinery goes together, talking about specs of mortar and tenon. And so, yes, you do build it on the ground, and then you do raise it up with using simple machines. We're not going to have a crane or anything. We're going to be using a bronchial tackle and getting that stuff as we get into our engineering this spring.
So that's where the hands on for people on the ground is going to come in and place and money. So these get constructed on the ground and they get raised by basically people power to get extra?
Very safely, too. We're going to be hinging into these foundations and these peers that we're calling them, and it'll be safe and fun.
So what's that building going to be used for?
We're hoping to be able to have grills and cookouts, outdoor classes, and a space for like eating outside and having picnic tables out there.
It will be available with the Whitney Center as well for events, and for the community.
Is anybody interested in becoming an architect or an engineer at this time, or a father at that? Well, just a quick note, one of my former students, John McDougall, okay, grew up right here in the valley, and the owner of HEB was also a student, a Bartlett student. So those two gentlemen went right through the school system, went off to college, great schools, and then they became engineers. So that's something to think about.
Good evening, everyone. Take care, I'll be there. Are there any F1 items? Preschool still on the whole business? Are there more?
Other than the budget, then I feel so much of a budget.
I got a big, big, bad, or the preschool, preschool is slash budget. Sure. I've got a non-budget preschool that has. Let's do it under the whole business, because that's kind of what I'm correct?
So, and one more thing I was going to say, the preschool, we really, I don't forget the transportation is part of it, it must be decided.
Yes, we get it, the parental transportation.
We're not going to be providing transportation.
Not unless we specifically need an after address.
So we're not required to? Because it's going to public, we still are required to? To provide transportation?
For specials.
Only if those students are specifically required.
Right, to have special.
And that's just the way.
So what if they go to school here or someplace else? If they require special transportation?
Even though we're opening our doors and calling it a public preschool, we don't have to provide.
Publicly supported.
And then we only have to lay down the complete budget.
Okay, well, so this is initially budget, but as the school is starting to figure out where the preschool is going to take place, one, I would miss the last one, I've got a Whitney Oversight Committee hat on for this one, but if the site chosen is the existing library conference room in the school, the Whitney Oversight Committee at this point is saying no to the conference room, and the Whitney becoming the library, not wanting to lose that as an open space to the public. It's one of the free spaces, it's one of the ones that's always open, so the Whitney Oversight Committee is at this point said no.
The only other caution about that room of the Whitney Center is it's an important room when you go. It's very important, that is for the trust of the.
Checklist.
Checklist, I suppose.
Yeah, there's hope there's going to be uses for it, and it just, there is a word that that is just a word that shouldn't be, shouldn't be lost for whatever reasons.
That was one of the spaces, Jerry, that we were looking at, the relocating the library. So we met with the Whitney Center Board, and I guess Andy's carrying their formal answer to that question.
I mean, I think from the school board standpoint, it would probably be hard to take a position on that, just to clarify. I don't feel about that room being used as a library. Should we even really consider, or does that make sense?
Well, I mean, again, also a bit of a discussion of who would have the right to say so. I think the Oversight Committee feels they have the right. If we feel we have the right, then there's an issue there. Plus, there's multiple crossover from both committees, so it would get sticky pretty quick if there was a conflict.
That's kind of what I'm trying to clarify. Is there, I guess that's a better way to frame it, is there a conflict with that position from the school board?
I would hope to not have it, but I just feel that we don't have all the details, that I, I don't know if I would feel comfortable saying 100% not going to be anywhere. I would hope to not have it, but part of the life, I think, Gale will give me some recommendations and options that I might be.
Okay.
Maybe we can reserve that discussion until we see what comes of it.
So I guess it does kind of play in the budget, obviously, a little bit, but I just wanted to put that in some.
What do we, so anything else for preschool, we're over the budget. Move on to the sixth grade. That is, oh, in regards to Bartlett and middle school structure, that's what I was on there. I guess is any updated information about the Bartlett middle school configuration?
Yeah, it looks like they're moving the sixth grade into the seventh, eighth grade village is the last, last piece of Scotty's here, but that's my understanding is.
So that's bad, aren't you?
That sixth grade will be moving up to the middle of the school village.
So I guess just for clarification, for the record, there have been rumors regarding not being moved, and I think based on some clarifications that we know, and examples we're talking about this and thinking about this, and they are claiming to move into a sixth, seventh, eighth grade configuration.
And that would be starting this September?
Correct. Any more discussion about this period?
I mean, I know they discussed it in the morning, did you, did I discuss it?
Well, I think they discussed also tuition, and you tabled the tuition discussion.
We tabled it because of the situation, but now we can pick on the table.
I think from our standpoint, it's going to be an open discussion. We're not considering it for our budget for next year, so we're not pressing for information at this point, but. I'll move on to the Jackson student mentor coach, any discussion about that this evening? We want to preserve that for later.
I didn't see, and maybe I missed it, so it's my fault, but I think we requested the job description, so.
I did, well, it really isn't a job description for that position as it's developing. The family support liaison is, I have a copy, but it really doesn't pertain to this position.
I didn't think so, but I wanted more of a clarification for everybody, because we keep referring back to that and the guidance council positions, because it would sort of touch on those things. So it's kind of to say, to make sure we're all starting at ground level, instead of keep going back to, well, isn't that someone's old, isn't that someone's old? So I'm trying to dispel that or clarify it.
Is there a link in Bartlett?
Yeah, yeah, there's nothing, there's understandings, but there's no official. So we're. There is one for Tom, because that position's relatively new there. But I think the position Bartlett doesn't have a formalized job description.
Okay. How do the guidance counselors at Kenan?
Yeah, they're, I apologize, I was looking for the family support liaison, and they have been mentioned. I think what you'll find with the high school guidance council, I'm not sure it hits on the pieces that you have, but I will send that out to you electronically.
My high school guidance is much more of a college-driven grades, classes.
Schedules.
What's the next step?
Special, it's really different than what we view guidance counselors of here.
So the family support liaison is the title for the person that we're talking about at Bartlett that has kind of helped our kids, is that right? No?
Yeah.
I saw her line, I didn't know, I was trying to see what it's called. Is that, that was, it was more.
Are there any other titles we should know about that are out there doing this type of support, even if it's ancillary to?
Just, like I said, the high school has a half-time person that is developing as we.
And what is that person called?
That's an ELO coordinate.
ELO, extended learning. And that stands for extended learning opportunities.
That's correct.
So maybe we can just keep it on the agenda until a preparation comes in, and then you know Gale has something she wants to share, and that moves things forward in a good way.
We only have now or another call? Under, you mean under first call?
Well, I had proposed extending Richmond and transition, Richmond position into a position similar to extended learning opportunities, personal, although I didn't call it that.
Personalized learning.
Personalized learning, thank you. And that person wouldn't do much of what we talked about in terms of connecting mentors for the youngsters working on, still carrying some of what the job has there, but also adding to the facets of more personalized training, mentorships, internships for kids, particularly our older, upper post students. But that would only extend to the sixth grade, going to seventh grade, is that right? It's not, are we? We would start there, and then we'd see, you know, how that developed and then move it down. Because part of what we want to do with all the students is do interest inventories and track their data, their interests, and if we're starting competency-based education with the student-led conferencing and setting individual goals, somebody has to kind of be the keeper of all that information, coordinating with teachers, just to help maintain consistency and being able to track progress along the competencies, help the teachers reach out to the community and bring in some of those folks.
That sounds really interesting. I'd like to see that further developed more.
Yeah, I mean, that actually is one, thank you, because it seems very intuitive, we were talking about last month, that if we can start small and do that and grow it as people are ready, it might be the ideal way to do it. And I'm glad that you were working on it before we even brought it up, so thank you. So maybe as that moves forward, we can get that description as well. Sure. I guess part of what I'm wondering is just in terms of keeping an eye on this, your authority sort of ends at middle school there, right? So then this person that will be on our staff or here, we would consider moving that person towards? To Barlett. Because I, we transition them and work with Barlett to transition them into now seventh grade.
But it's just one for all of our students, too, I see.
Okay, so, okay, so then you could have that person be, I guess, it's confusing because Vicki takes over for middle school and does a lot of transitioning. We haven't done a lot from home base here to do the things that we're talking about for our students. With left in, or left hands and then not, the tennis hands, but it would be nice if it was coordinated. I didn't realize that you could do that, so that's part of what I'm trying to do. It will still be in the authority of the principal of the school in Barlett to make the ultimate decisions about what that would look like, but we can bring the kids in and make recommendations and share the information that we have and the data that we've had going forward. And then make the recommendations and then at that point, they're going to implement it. Okay, and you're saying it's the principal of those respective schools, their authority to oversee, your wife's? Yes, okay, that's true, got it. Okay, so you'll get the, whatever descriptions there are will be forthcoming, whatever is appropriate. Yes, okay, thank you.
And also, yeah. Susie just stressed the priority. In a list report in regards to the meeting in regards to combining the town, Kevin, they talked to Julie a little bit about this. It definitely makes sense to try to reconcile those two things together this year.
It's too much.
They have to have their annual report ready two weeks before they actually have to have it ready, so it's definitely practical.
And are we leaving them to report that two weeks prior to them or are we just doing it at the same time?
Well, we had to change, is it two weeks prior to the meeting day?
Oh, I see, and that moves.
The meeting had to be a meeting day or the town would have to have this report ready two, kind of, it doesn't have to maybe do with, what we have to have a report in regards to their report, it's just, it's two prior to the meeting day. Just have the report ready. And it's live before. You don't necessarily have it all printed, but you do have to have it. Sarah?
Yes, eventually, I mean, before, last year, I was, I corrected here and you have, I says, is the question that due to some buildings or bonds that we were doing, is the reason we changed that meeting.
That was that particular year and reflection on that, Sarah. I think that we used to typically always have our annual district meeting after the town meeting.
Correct.
And town meeting is late for us this year. And our school meeting is early this year. And coordinating all that's tough for me, but it's tough for the SAU, it's tough for us. I think having our meeting before town meeting puts a little more pressure on us, which I think is a good year to do that. Since we're considering preschool, so I think hopefully that'll be a good turnout for our annual district meeting. And so I'm not, I don't think it'd be a great idea for us to bump our meeting back this year just so we can have the posts combined anyway. I like the idea of having our meeting early, it's capable, maybe people's energy levels will still be high and we'll get.